Full-time staff is here anyways right now.
Yay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah. Finance committee, do you want to call yourselves to order?
Um, yeah, I was calling the finance maybe to order. You have a vice president, Lindsay McCarthy president.
Bernie Parado president.
Dan Campbell abstains.
Okay. And you guys are starting at six oh two.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and we're off.
Awesome. Well, thanks for having me back. Beginning of December meeting, we have just a little bit of your time tonight to present three new employees for Northfield EMS, two full-time EMTs, and one who's going to be starting as a part-time per diem and hopefully growing into that going forward. Any particular order you want us to go through on your notes?
Let's start with Emily.
Very good. Ms. Emily Ethier is a paramedic from the area who's coming to join us. Very excited to have her onboard. She has got multiple years of experience in the region, working throughout the area, and has great clinical skills, great interpersonal skills, some amazing personal background that'll bring just a wonderful flair to our community. And.
Like working for the Peace Corps?
Kind of like working for the Peace Corps and teaching us all to be a little bit more inclusive and understanding and looking at the world. Yeah. So that's Ms. Emily, if you want to say hi to her.
Okay, so I sat in, just FYI, I sat in on all of the screening and hiring committees, so I know just how long of a process this was. We're just absolutely, and I just want to say thank you to your entire crew, especially Captain Drumkohl and Joe and Todd, because we spent a lot of time going through all of the questions, which, especially for the EMTs, took quite a bit of time. Do you want to talk a little bit about the process and how, was it all Tim's questions? Or how did that come about?
It was a collective process for interviewing with questions that had been compiled from all inputs or from different providers' input, then went through a review process. And for the paramedic, it was a shorter list to draw from, but certainly Emily rose to the top. And then for the EMTs, we ended up screening through applications over 20. We narrowed it down to seven, eight, who finally interviewed. And then the top full-time candidate and part-time candidate are presented here tonight, Elizabeth and Victoria.
Good. It was a good process, very thorough. I'm just noting the number of questions that we actually went through was pretty significant.
It was a lot of them.
Yeah, and it included, if I remember correctly, it included quite a few different areas. I really liked the approach that you guys came up with. I think we were looking at not only like technical and clinical skills, but also what people brought to the team and the culture, along with experience and a few other things. I'm just looking at my checklist. Yep. Background and motivation, clinical knowledge and skills, teamwork and communication, workplace behavior, and HR perspective, conflict resolution and accountability, professional conduct and compliance, equity, diversity and inclusion, stress and wellness, professional growth and retention. So those were the categories, and I think like the total was 25 questions or something like that for each candidate over both screening and hiring. So it was quite a bit. So a big shout out to the whole group and coming up with the questions and spending a lot of time and having our candidates go through a few rounds to get where they are tonight. Questions from the, questions for Emily from the board?
One question, Emily. Where'd you do your, not do the, but Peace Corps?
I served in Rwanda in East Africa.
Oh, really?
Yep, for about 27 months.
That's probably what my daughter did.
Really?
Yep, she's there too.
That's amazing.
She was there. So that alone.
An excuse to go back? I'm always looking for one.
No, that's all right.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else? We had a good discussion about how medicine and care is delivered in Rwanda, especially, I think, some things that could be applied in the United States, like delivering things via drone, for example, to areas that are at a distance from a facility, things like that. It was a really interesting discussion. Do you want to do a motion for appointing Emily?
Emily. The last name's Ethier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion to offer Emily Ethier, position of paramedic to EMS department effective upon completion of the conditions and activities below. This is a full-time benefited position. The pay, rate of pay is 32, 36 an hour, grade 10, step one.
Effective, when was it? Tomorrow?
Starting tomorrow.
December 10th?
Yep.
Effective December 10th.
So motion second? Second. All those in favor?
Dan Campbell says yes. Aye.
Aye. Just old habits. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So Elizabeth Trudeau is coming to us. Elizabeth is a newer certified EMT, but quickly through the process, I wasn't involved in the first panel interview. I stayed out of it, but was told right off the bat that she had risen to the top of that group with all of the questions and everything else, and has carried herself with professionalism and wisdom and knowledge in all of the different categories, and then went back to the final interview and again rose right through the ranks with recommendations for hiring. So at this time, I'd present her to you for the full-time EMT position with EMS.
Questions from the board?
Not at all.
Nope.
We're happy to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm just going to note that you expressed an interest, and I know that Victoria is, you're just finishing your paramedic program, and you've talked about going into the paramedic program.
Yes.
So part of it was, I mean, just so the board's aware that they're looking ahead to a long career in this field. Yeah. Okay, shall we do a motion for Elizabeth?
I make a motion that we offer the position of EMT to Elizabeth Trudeau, to the EMS department effective upon completion of the conditions and activities below. This is a full-time benefited position. The rate of pay is 27, 24 an hour, grade eight, step one, effective tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
December 10th.
They're going right to work.
December 10th.
Excellent. Can't wait.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again. And Ms. Victoria Goldstein coming to you. You've heard a bit of her story already. Excelled through the process, is not at this time in a place where she was looking for full-time employment, does work as an EMT elsewhere, is currently in paramedic school advancing her studies, is looking to be a part of what we're doing here in Northfield and continue to grow. So we really felt that with her interest in us and the way she had conducted herself and then what we know of her, we'd like to bring her onboard and have her become a part of our Northfield EMS team on the part-time per diem slate so we can watch her grow and have her become a part of our team.
Excellent.
Any questions for Victoria? So you're finishing up in January, right? Is that, or thereabouts?
Correct, about five weeks.
Yeah. Congratulations in advance. I know you still have a lot to do, but, okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Victoria Goldstein as a per diem EMT.
Okay. I make a motion to offer Victoria Goldstein, the position of EMT to the EMS department effective upon completion of the conditions and activities below. You'll all receive a letter that has the conditions on it. This is a per diem position. The rate of pay is 27, 24 an hour, grade eight, step one. Effective tomorrow?
December 10th, 2025, and term expires December 31st, 2026.
Okay. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Appreciate y'all very much.
I have a question for Matt. Does this make you fully staff now?
This fills out our full-time staff for what we had budgeted for this year. So just shy halfway through the fiscal year, we have filled all of our full-time seats.
Congratulations, everyone.
Now, I mentioned, you know, didn't have questions for you. All your resumes and all everything that you turned in and your applications for the job were top-notch. You really, you know, we're glad to have you.
Do you have any questions for the select board?
That easy, huh?
I would like to say, since Matt's taken over and the regionalization is starting to gel, the team you're putting together is, seems to be top-flight, and it's nice to see EMS grow into what we all thought it could be.
Appreciate your support and thanks to the team that's here.
Absolutely. Thank you to everybody.
Yes, yeah.
Did somebody need, whose family was here, somebody was taking pictures. Do you want?
You want to take them from up here?
One's here, one's not.
Okay.
We just want to accommodate any picture taken.
Take one in the office. They have the good seal on them.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you all for having us.
Thanks, guys.
He's there for about the same line. He's the only white person for 200 miles.
Well, that's why they have really.
She didn't like the color of that.
Yeah. Oh, microphone. I recognize the look.
You know, words for more than kids. After that, yeah.
Thanks, guys. Oh, that's exciting. Okay. Next up is Rick Martin. Hi, Rick, and.
How's it going? This is Liz Bruchada, new business manager.
Oh, hi, Liz.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.
She'll keep coming back when we need to, so the budget as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, they're behind you too, watching, so.
Yeah, no, this is great. So we have, I just want to make sure everybody has their presentations.
Yes.
Okay. So we've got paper copies, and Tyler's going to put up on the screen, and we're just going to have to remember to let Tyler know when we're kind of moving forward, so the audience at home can ensure. Yeah.
Okay, we're here tonight to provide information and an update regarding a proposed new, a brand-new school building project for Franklin County Technical School and update you where we are in the process and what the potential impact would be for the town of Northfield. So I put together a little slides. These are just very simple pictures for the first set of slides showing the building right now. And then, but the real part of it starts right here. When we get to the third slide, if you can turn to that. Yes, you got it. Well, it started probably close to eight to 10 years ago, about eight years ago, we started to have our light flicker on and off in the building, and it was pointed up to us that it was an electrical switchgear concern. So it kept happening, and we were kind of warned, you got to get that fixed, because if this goes out and you don't have an electrical switchgear, you'll be out of power in school for a couple of months. So we went out, because it was made by the old Frederick, Federal Pacific, we went out and had a different manufacturer build us a replica that took a couple of months. We had it on standby, and two days later, it, the electrical went like this and then off. But that happened on a Friday afternoon. It was fully restored, installed 24 hours later, so no impact on the school. So we dodged it. Well, we had to go out and spend another $100,000 and rebuild another one. So there were about $100,000 a pop, and there's like 15 or 16 of those. Well, that one got rebuilt. This time it took two months, and it went out again, and we reinstalled that one. At this point, we submitted a letter to the MSBA as a letter of intent to see where we could go for a building project, whether we renovate our current existing building, which was our first priority, and see where we would go from there. During this timeframe also, once you do a, if we were just to do an electrical mechanical system, the cost estimators, not us, came up with approximately $32 million to do the whole facility. And then, once you do that, that will then trigger, that would then trigger a sprinkler system, which we're grandfathered in by not having. We would now have to have approximately about $8 million. And we also have underneath us, we had to reallocate our education programs numerous times over the last several years in various areas of the building because underground sewage leakage. And each of those times, we were fortunate enough to find it. One time we got nervous, couldn't find it. We hired it outside company, and they found it within a day so we could get back to services. Our roof will also need replacing. We're on, we've already done our two roof coatings. By law, you cannot do a third. You have to do a complete tear-down and rebuild of the entire roof, which takes a number of years in a school building, because if you think about it, they have to tear down and break down one section, move the kids to another location, rebuild that, then you do another section. It takes five, six years to rebuild a roof at an estimated cost of about 17 million. So totally, we're around $74 million if we did nothing to correct the educational component, but just the structure of the facility. And when we looked at that, we then called the bank and trying to figure out how would that work from a bonding perspective, you know, we wanted to try to fix our own facility. They said, well, that would be a 15-year bond, because we can't extend it to a 30-year bond, because we can't take that money and put it into a bad facility that's over 50 years old. So we go, okay. Well, at around that time, we heard back from the MSBA that we were approved for the eligibility portion of the MSBA project. We moved to number one on their list once they came out and saw the facility, because the outside of the facility is beautiful. Our landscaping crew has done a great job. Our students are out there all the time and irrigating and have done a tremendous job upkeeping the exterior look, but the nuts and bolts of the interior was what the real concern happened to be. So we had the eligibility period. We then moved into what they call the feasibility study, and we are now in the beginning of the schematic design. And that's where we're at right now. The next slide kind of shows us the difference between a 15-year bond and 30-year bond. We would envision, if we were able to do it ourselves, there would be numerous 15-year bonds, because when, once you finish one thing, something else dies out. So that would probably go on with the existing facility, probably for like ever. When I go to the next slide, here's what the architects, you can't really get a good clear picture, because again, we just began the schematic design portion, but we had eight, eight designs to choose from. The one on the upper far left is using our existing facility, which was our initial goal, and to update everything to code, above and beyond what I just told you, would be $103 million. That's with not one penny of MSBA reimbursement to our towns. What that means is that's the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's a grant program, which we are now involved in. But if we went with the existing code, we would bypass that grant, and we would have to go out to our towns for $103 million to upgrade the code in a 15-year bond. So a big difference in price on that one. The, then we have all these other options. We narrowed it down, for the sake of the argument here tonight, three options, the three that are highlighted in the dotted blue dots. We went with the one on the bottom right, because it was, it had a combination of one of the most cost-effective structures, but if you see that little bump out in the back, all our vocational shops would be in that location. Right now, if you come to our school and you're getting, and you're in a math class, you will be smelling Autotech fumes, and you'll be smelling, they were right across the hall from each other. So to avoid that educational disruption, that design seemed the best. The matrix that we went through to get to that design, this is kind of tentatively where it might be located, and that's kind of what it would be. I just skipped through a couple of slides, so if you can stay with me. Sorry about that. And this is the interior of the design right now as it stands. And I think I want to make one point clear here. When we were going through this process, we had to select, we had a night of all engineers and architects come, about 30 came. We needed to select. I told them right off the bat, if you think you're going to build the Taj Mahal to have your name on this, then you're at the wrong school. We just want something that's going to be functional for, for our community for the next 50 years. And the current building has served our community well for 50 years. We go around town, we see our plumbers and our electricians and our carpenters and the people, they don't move. They graduate, they get employed, and they live in the community and pay back taxes. So we were really concerned about what they were looking to build. Another thing that we told the MSBA is that we're not looking to expand our enrollment here. We're very aware of, if we were to build a school to house 800, 900 students, we could probably fill it. At what cost? At the detriment of our other school districts. And that's not where we want to go. So we actually proposed something that was unique to the MSBA. We proposed a building with less enrollment than we currently have. So we went down to 600 as our proposed new facility, because that's a big cost savings to our member towns. You know, if we go up to 700, that's, you know, that's tens of million dollars higher. So that's not where we really want to be. We're very cautious of kind of what we were dealing with, since the prices of these buildings have gone through the roof since COVID.
Can I interject a question?
Yep.
So I had heard that there had been a big donation or a plan to build something with Boeing, some sort of flight or air training at the school. Is that included in this, and is that contributing to some of the rebuild costs?
No, that's not a factor of this. That was a competitive grant that we received, and I'll get, there's a slide on that.
Okay.
Good question. You're, you're, you're already ahead of me. And the academic end will be on the top floor of this particular facility. Again, this is schematic design, so I, I really don't want to spend a lot of time on something that is not concrete yet.
Yeah.
The, that design drawn out might look something like this. Kind of a basic building. And more in depth, this is what it would be a little bit closer. The designers went around to the entire area, and they wanted to build something that replicated where we are and who we are. So if you notice the front of the building, it looks like the mills in the area. That's what their design was on purpose. And some of the newer structures on the corners were representing these structures that are in the area, and they built that little thing in the middle to represent the bridges that were in the area. So they were trying to be careful to design something. Now, again, this is not a final design, but it's heading in that direction, but it gives you an idea what the architects were pretty sensitive to. Here's our decision-making matrix. We had a big, you know, we had some parents, community members, schoolteachers, students, administrators.
Rick, just.
Which slide are you on?
Are you on the evaluation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on.
Okay. Yeah, Tyler needs.
Sorry, Tyler? Nope.
Nope.
My bad.
There we are.
All right. So that was our decision-making matrix, because again, if we just bring the building up to code, we don't address the educational issues. And I know that this committee was aware, when we were short rooms, that we got rid of our assembly hall and turned it into four classrooms, so we don't have an assembly hall. We're not looking to get one, because guess what? That's not going to be reimbursed by the MSBA. So we're very, we're very careful to not get the extra stuff. There's non-reimbursable space all over the place anyways. When it comes to office space, that's not reimbursed in any building in the state. Hallways, site work, all that kind of stuff. So there's hard cost and soft cost. But we were looking at all of these and what would be the building from the options that we had, and we went with the one option 8A at the very far right column. And looking at cost per square foot, our projected costs, now you see the cost of the building originally, we had it at 197 million, 196 million in that, in that particular ballpark.
Are you on to the next slide?
Next slide, sorry. It's just a habit. Sorry, my bad.
No, that's okay.
And I'm on the next slide. Yep, he, he does have it up. So the original cost of the building, 196, but when you calculate the soft cost and all the other stuff, it comes out to $246 million. These are some of the building projects in other schools at around our time. We look at South Shore vote, the second one in from the left, from heading from left to right. That, that price came out two years ago, and that's 280 million. They're very comparable to us from a size standpoint and enrollment standpoint. Now, they're more expensive, and that was two years ago. And why is that so significant? Because every year you wait to build a building. And why is that so significant? Because every year you wait to build a building, it's a four percent increase in labor costs and a four percent increase in supplies and materials. So that today's dollars would be well over three hundred million for that same exact particular building. Old Colony was last year. They they came in around two eighty. So we were trying to, you know, see what was reasonable. But when you look at the next slide.
While we're switching, so um citizens are listening at home. And you mentioned soft costs versus building costs. Could you explain that to the people?
Yes. So the soft cost, um, we're talking about when you build a new facility, you have to do all the site work and utilities and the piping. You have to do the clearance of the of all of the landscaping of the land. And the old facility has to be removed and has to be removed very safely um for the asbestos and the abatement cost and hazardous materials. All that soft cost is millions of dollars if you look at to tear down the building correctly. Um, plus all of the hallway spaces, um offices, furnishings, all the stuff that they don't reimburse.
And the amount of the reimbursement is what?
Um, we qualified for around sixty-five percent. But when you calculate the soft cost.
Oh, right.
The non-reimbursable, I like to say what the actual cost is closer to fifty percent of the reimbursement. So if you have a two hundred and forty-six million dollar building approximately, a hundred and twenty-three million dollars will be provided back to the towns from the MSBA. And the towns would come up with a total of a hundred and twenty-three million over the thirty-year of the life of the bond. Now, when we compare that to a hundred and three million dollars not getting paid in a fifteen-year bond versus a thirty-year bond for a hundred and twenty-three million dollars for a new building that can last for fifty years, not something we're gonna have to keep pumping money in, that's that's a significant difference why we went with the new building project. When we look at this slide, this is a matrix slide that.
Which one is that?
The um one right here, sorry. Yep.
Okay.
Um, just to give you an update, the red dot in the bottom is the Greenfield High School that was built in two thousand thirteen at a square footage or a cost per square foot at three hundred and thirty-four dollars. It was a sixty-six million dollar building at a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Now, when you follow what happened, this line went up, up, up. We started getting into COVID. And it shot right up. And all the other dots around that are all the other building projects in the state funded through the MSBA that were being done at the same time. Some were well below the line, some were at the line. Again, if you're the the like high schools tend to be a lot more expensive while like the municipalities, you know, whether that's like a small school and elementary school tend to be less expensive, all depends on the design. But we're all the way up here in the far right. You see Franklin County Tech. So we're at eight hundred and ninety-three dollars per square foot. Now, we've been informed that cost is coming down, but we don't know by exactly how much. Not by enough to make a significant difference, but that cost is coming down through some new initiatives put through um to help funding through the MSBA. Um, when we go up there, you see the buildings around us. So we're on the lower end of that um pipeline um as compared to the other ones. When we extrapolate the school district of Greenfield and you take it all the way up, if that were to be built today, it would be about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety million. But that's only for a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. We're two hundred and twenty thousand square feet because we have vocational technical programs. Um, so that's where, and and if you calculate that into that Greenfield building, that would probably be closer to a two hundred and eighty million dollar building. So the prices are, they just skyrocketed. And it's very disappointing for uh our towns and our communities because I don't think they get that inside of Route one twenty-eight in downtown Boston. I don't think they understand um some of the burdens that are going on with all of our towns. Next slide, please. Just for an enrollment perspective, um last year, I think I came here and said, I think we hit up top of our in-district enrollment here at five ninety-one. Um, we dropped down to five seventy-nine. And I continue us, I think we'll level off around five fifty, five sixty at some point in that in that particular ballpark, um based on ten-year trends from the School Attendant Children Report, which we and which we provide an analysis of. Um, so that just gives us an idea. I just want to also articulate this one slide here. Next slide. My bad.
Could I ask you a question about enrollment though first? You mentioned that you were building for less than the enrollment for seven hundred kids, but it looks here like you said.
So we currently have six hundred and fifty-three.
Okay.
Students, and that includes out of district.
Okay.
Right. So and we got some private programs that are self-funded, you know. So total enrollment is for the building itself is six fifty-three. The member district enrollment is five seventy-nine.
Got it. Thank you.
Are you gonna be having a cap on enrollment?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to the lottery part of it and that. Yes, absolutely. Yep, that's a great question.
Pause for a second, Rick, and just are there any questions so far from the finance committee? No? Thank you.
Yep. Um, and like I said earlier, Franklin County Tech has been serving the community for some time. And we wanted to see, we got an independent report given to us by an auditor firm that has audited all the Volk Tech schools. And they gave us and they found out that Franklin County Tech was number one in the state by um declaring by the number of high school graduates that are declaring their intent to go to work upon graduation. Some of the Volk schools that we read about in the newspaper and our national media are at the bottom of that list. You know, Minuteman Tech and Blackstone, they think they're the Cadillacs and all because they're taking all the best academic students. They're not concerned about the kids who need the hands-on learning as evidence of no one's no one's graduating out of those Volk Tech schools and going into the world of work.
Meaning they're going to college.
Yeah, yeah, which is fine. But that's why we have Pioneer. You know, we I mean, we need to hold true to what we do well, and we partner with our regional school districts. They're in direct competition as evidence of that. There's a big difference. So that just kinda shows where our philosophy has been and continues to be. Um, some of the programs, I think was mentioned by you, Sarah, in regards to.
Next slide.
Next slide. Thank you. Regardless, um, the aviation.
Yes.
Um, if you look down the bottom of that, uh, not the bottom. I think you're probably somewhere in like two thousand twenty-three, you'll see a four-point-one-eight-five million dollar grant. That was a competitive grant that helped us build um the aviation program.
It's just isn't the right slide. Is it the chart, the competitive?
Yes, it's this one right here, sorry.
All right, got it.
Yeah, I.
We'll get there.
This is gonna throw off my show for the other towns, you know. But this, since two thousand fourteen, we have gone after competitive grants in the amount of eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars we have received. And that allows us not to go out to our towns and stay afloat um for the new programs and initiatives that we have been running. And the latest one, to answer your question, is the, uh, next slide. Is the is the aviation maintenance technology. And that's a twelve thousand square foot aviation hangar with over one point five million dollars worth of equipment. We have approximately eight aircraft. Um, students coming out of that program will get certified through the FAA as aviation maintenance technicians, enable them to start at a livable wage rate out of high school and work anywhere in the continental United States or anywhere in the world for that particular matter. These, the reason why we decided to do that is twofold. The first thing we look at is jobs. There's a significant issue with all the major airports across the country with all the aviation maintenance technicians aging out after World War Two. They're not getting replaced. So they they have these uh sign-on bonuses for seventy-five thousand and all this other stuff. And we'll tell you how to do it. We'll train you. Well, now these training facilities, so we had no problem getting this grant because we were doing something that was in desperate need of the Commonwealth. So um we proposed this grant, we got the grant. And um our students will acquire like twelve hundred hours in the course that they would be able to be there. And then hopefully, they just stay right in right in the area. I mean, we do border the line of the Turner Falls Airport. So uh we were able to build a taxiway from that hangar out to the main runway. So it's kind of neat that they're right there. The kids are excited about that particular program, obviously.
How many kids do you have in the program?
We're just started.
Oh, you just started.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just going on to year two. So we slowly build it one grade level at a time.
Yep, yep.
You know, um, and we only have one instructor. We're looking to hire a number-two in instructor as we add more grade levels.
Yeah, that's gonna be a challenge too, I would imagine.
Yeah, yeah, to find that level of expertise, exactly.
Do you guys have uh wastewater or sewer? Because I know that's a that's an area that we're really as a as a state and a region really deficient in. Do you do that kind of uh preparation?
Um, no, we we don't have that as a training. We do have students that go there after high school and work in the wastewater treatment facility and learn about it. Um, we do our field trips over there from time to time. I think we go.
Just there.
Yeah, we were just there. You're right. Um, and get the kids as a pathway because some of the basic practical skills they already have. But there's not a specialized training program just far there, but there is a shortage in the industry.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, next slide, please. And this is the last slide for this. This is this is another new facility on site. Um, and it's our animal science veterinary tech.
Well, nice.
Um, we do, this is a veterinary clinic. And again, we went after a lot of grant money to help support this initiative. Um, it's a four thousand eight hundred square foot facility. And it allows something that really impacts our nineteen-member towns, especially further south. And that is, some of our towns have students that want animal science. And then those towns are required by law to pay for the tuition and the transportation to go all the way down to Smith Vocational School. The range of that per pupil is between fifty-seven thousand and eighty-two thousand, depending on the distance of the transportation, per pupil, per year. So we average twelve thousand four hundred per pupil. Makes a lot more sense for us to start going down this road and saving our communities the money in the long run. You know, so I think that's was a major initiative. We're gonna continue to grow that uh program. We just um wrote a two-point-five million dollar grant to build an agricultural bond so we can have a full-fledged agricultural, animal science type of program. And therefore, no students will be going out of the area and paying those ridiculous amounts of money that we would have to pay to be able to do that. So we have that lens as well. Here's where we are in our proposed timeline.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. Yep, sorry. And I think this is the second to last slide, right? And uh I gotta update this slide because we're a little bit further down. We're, you know, already in that September schematic design. We're at the very beginning of it in the red line. And the proposed timeframe, we would go out to a district-wide vote sometime next fall. Um, if that succeeds, then the building would um be fully constructed in that two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-one timeframe.
So how many towns have to pass that? All? It has to be a hundred percent?
It's the same exact format we use with our windows and doors um project according to the regional agreement, which is a majority.
Yep.
Of that town. So if five thousand people go out to vote, we need two thousand five hundred and one. So that's kind of.
Civil majority.
Yes, yep.
But of the of the towns, do the same thing with the towns, the majority of the towns?
No, just majority of.
Everybody voting?
Right.
Okay.
Everybody voting, correct. So so another um thing with the MSBA project, just to see what it would be for the town of Northfield.
I wanna clarify.
Yep.
Um, so you're saying that the individual, that it's the total number of votes cast.
Right.
And the total number of eligible voters uh for the entire. Across the nineteen-member town.
So we did this back uh about a decade or about eleven years ago when we did the Windows and Doors Project. And we had about eighty percent of the total vote in favor and twenty percent not in favor um among all nineteen-member towns. So that's the way they did the breakdown.
So I was just curious because, I mean, some of the towns are much, much smaller than others, right? And so that they would be disadvantaged in their voice by that vote. I'm just trying to clarify. I'm thinking it through. Sorry, can you smell something burning? I'm thinking it.
And the larger towns pay a lot more. The smaller towns aren't as impacted as much.
Okay.
Um, from a, you know, we have a town that did a presentation where a town was paying ninety thousand dollars a year if this vote went through, right? Something in that particular ballpark. So depending on population in your EQV, in your EQV and on that particular formula, which I'm about to get to. Next slide. All right, so um the anticipated thirty-year bond for Northfield would be the second bullet point, would be in the range of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. Um, that's gonna be based on population in EQV. Uh, the district-wide vote date is estimated to be around next fall. And the little paragraph below that kinda explains a little bit about how they factor that in as far as the cost is concerned. Um, there's a little note at the bottom that says currently, as of last year's per-pupil assessment, Northfield was eighteen thousand for about fifty students for a nine hundred, a nine hundred thousand dollar assessment. Um, I mean, if that was Smith Volk, it'd be just through the roof. It would be um unsustainable, obviously. Um, so that's the slide there. So each town's annual capital cost share is based on the average of two factors. It's proportion of the district's total population from the most recent U.S. census and it's proportion of the district's total equalized property valuation as most recently reported by the State Tax Commission. These two ratios are calculated, added together, and divided by two. And the final average is rounded to the nearest third decimal place. And that's how they come up with that EQV.
So if this was approved, then are we talking about this hitting in fiscal year twenty-eight?
It would be a gradual um payment schedule. It would start off small.
Okay.
And then it gets.
And then build over time?
And build, yeah.
Oh. It's projected to be closer to twenty thirty for that full.
Full assessment?
Yeah. Once the building is built, that's when the assessment kicks into the number you're seeing. But I figured I'd just show you the worst-case scenario now.
Yeah, good.
Right.
Don't bury the lead.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you're not, you're not cutting back anywhere on technologies and stuff. As far as, I mean, the technologically, you build a new building, you wanna have everything there.
Yeah, we have to buy regulation now because now everything's up to code.
Yeah.
And so now we have to be now up to code, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Rick, for the people that are looking at that slide, the one we just discussed with the bullet points, all in the assessment would be for Northfield as of last year would be our nine hundred thousand dollars plus three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
About a million three.
Yep. Thank you.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. Next slide, please. And the question kind of was alluded to earlier, regarding admissions, lottery, all of that. Just to kinda get some clarity around this brand-new initiative, and it's brand-new to us. It's brand-new to the towns. It was put upon us by the state. Um, so I'm just gonna kinda walk us through. Um, the student will apply and then that application needs to be verified. And upon a verified, and there's different ways, I won't get into the finer details, but rental agreement, electric bill, et cetera. Um, once the addresses are verified, we hire a third-person go-to CTE company to do the lottery. Because we didn't feel like we wanted to be the one pulling the names out of the hat. So we have a third um person company that the applications go off to. They then will pull that. That will stop on January fifteenth. And then they'll pull the lottery on February fifth. That's kinda how they would go about it. And the lottery allocations are based on the quota of the town. And that's the next slide, so I'll get that if I can go to the next slide. Um, so every applicant with a completed application, a verified address, gets a random lottery number. Northfield um as of this October one has fifty-eight students enrolled. So students are accepted in lottery order as long as their own town still has open seats in its quota. The quota for FY twenty-six or actually for this. The quota for FY twenty-six, or actually for this next year coming up, would be ten students in that first grade level for the town of Northfield. Currently, we have eight applications. So, if that doesn't grow, then all of those students get in automatically.
Okay.
Um, and then once a town's quota is filled, any additional students from that town go on the holding list. And, and then they're drawn from there. So, some towns do not fill all their open seats. After all towns have used their allotted seats, any leftover seats are given to the remaining students with the best lottery numbers, regardless of the town. So, that's pretty much the way we've done it anyways. Uh, that's just following our regional agreement. So, for us, it's not a big, big change in that, in that respect. The change falls on the families, because it's still a lottery. So, if you have a family of electricians, and your father's gone there, and your, and your brothers and sisters have gone there, and you apply, and you know, you've done well as an eighth grader, um, that's now, that's no longer rewarded. If you worked hard and you done well, it's a lottery number, and that just goes in. So, you may not get selected, and that could break the family ties to that as well. Or you're that student that might have struggled in grade seven, and said, hey, if you get your act together, you can go to the vote school. Just get that school discipline down, just get whatever. So, the kid does that now, but with a lottery, then none of that matters anymore. So, obviously, we're not a big fan of it, because we think it takes away the hard-work ethic that this community has thrived on. And we're not happy about how that doesn't teach our kids to go in the direction to be self-employed down the road. Um, so, we'll see how the lottery goes. I know there'll be a lot of challenges to the bigger school districts with five hundred students on their waitlist that are grabbing, you know, that other list I showed you that grab all the college-bound kids? They're the ones who have been in the struggle with the big issues for us. You know, it's gonna hurt some families that, um, don't get in. And the other thing, why we're not in favor of the lottery system, is imagine having your son and daughter work to someone that normally wouldn't have gotten in. But they're in the next booth next to you in the welding shop with a live torch, and they're fooling around. That happens occasionally, but not that often, because that, because usually those kind of impulsive discipline issues are screened out prior to getting to that point. So, it's a safety issue, when you put a fourteen-year-old kid in a welding booth with a torch. Right, so, there's things this lottery is gonna, is gonna come back and bite some towns. I mean, I mean, some of the school districts probably closer to the eastern part of the state that will have a, you know, I think after it's all said and done for us, there might be thirty kids on the waiting list. So, it's not gonna be a, a huge, um, waiting list as compared to your typical vocational technical school across the other parts of the states.
I have two questions about the lottery. So, the lottery is, I was confused, because you said this is not anything new for us, but it is new, right?
The lottery is new. The way in which we go about our criteria is not new. So, as far as, um-
But you'll be limited in the lottery, by the lottery, as to how you can apply application criteria, right?
Right, exactly. We're, we're not gonna apply any criteria. We're just gonna-
And there's no way to do a way, I mean, that doesn't seem rational.
Right, I know. I agree. That's, that's exactly what our contention is.
Okay, uh, my other question is a little bit of a detail question. So, um, a town uses up their quota, gets on the waiting list, takes some other slots that were left over.
Yep.
Is their quota the next year reduced, or?
The quotas are based on the-
Oh, the graduates?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go. You already had it.
Sorry, I had to follow the line.
Well, this lottery is state-mandated then?
Yep.
Okay.
And it came about out of the larger, a couple, just two or three of the larger VOTech schools that were, um, being much more selective in their recruiting and, um, their attention. Now, would we like, hey, if a kid struggles in school, they may be in the wrong school. If a kid has straight Cs or Ds and struggles academically, and we're hearing from the kid and the parent, they got these good mechanical skills, you're in. You used to be, yeah, we would take you.
Right, it was a good fit.
It's the right school.
Right, right.
We're not the right school for everybody, but we're the right school for that kid. So, that takes that off the table. So, um-
So, is this one of those things, Rick, that you're talking about, where it works for, um, like, say, Eastern Massachusetts and less so for rural districts, where we seem to be maybe more right-sized in terms of where, uh, where kids are going to high school?
I tend to look at it like a pot, like a big pie. Yes, that's one slice of the pie.
Yeah, okay.
I would say for sure, that would be one slice of the equation. There's other slices that come into fold as well, but that would definitely be one.
Yeah. I just, I mean, the longer we're all on the select board, the more we run into, like, some solutions work in the eastern part of the state, like when we talk about highways and schools and all the, you know, infrastructure stuff. It might work based on the population and the concentration and the way they're, um, like you were saying, they're, they're in there for other reasons, not just for the programs that you have.
Right.
Um, it just, it, it's unfortunate, I think, sometimes, because from a rural standpoint, where we have different needs, and you want a little bit of flexibility to, to meet your, your mission.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda hopeful that it will turn on its head eventually.
Okay.
You know?
It'll sort itself out, yeah.
I mean, we didn't go with a weighted lottery. You'll hear a little bit about a weighted lottery.
Oh.
Right? We didn't do that, and there's a good reason for it. We look back to a ten-year trend. And a weighted lottery, you get an extra ping-pong ball if, you know, you have a good discipline record. Then instead of one ping-pong ball, you'll get two. If you have a good attendance record, you get another ping-pong ball instead of that one. So, you can get three or four ping-pong balls extra, improving your odds. Well, we didn't go with that, because when we look back over a ten-year trend, there's been one, now, there was another one that might have been counted as that, but maybe two kids in ten years that have applied that brought a knife or a gun to their middle school, or had a significant drug, you know, a drug-dealing type of situation. They were very unsafe. That's what it took. If you didn't have that, you got an extra ping-pong ball.
Oh, so.
Right?
It wasn't heavy, wasn't-
Or, we look back, and we saw three kids with more than twenty-seven absences. Oh, if you had beyond twenty-seven, you didn't get that extra ping-pong ball. Well, everyone's been getting that all along. So, we would then have to implement a weighted lottery, then we have to pay with town dollars a mediator and an appeals officer. By, by law, because, oh, no, that absence, I had, it, it, it wasn't twenty-nine absence, it was only twenty-six, because these, then they have to dispute it through us. And a whole appeals committee, so we said, why bother? It's not gonna even be an impact for us. That's another thing, that would be a much larger impact in some of the vocational technical schools closer to the larger cities.
Right, right, right. One more question. So, the rural, there, there's some information came down about legislation on rural school, schools, and being more advantaged, or some, some stuff.
Yes, yes.
Uh, can you elucidate on that? You know, did that, did that affect your scheduling here or your planning?
That's a great question. It impacts our budget, um, significantly, because, um, for some reason, vocational technical schools are excluded from receiving rural aid.
You are kidding me.
No. Uh, that was something where I was at. I had, I had meetings with state reps, our MVA board, all the other schools. They were shocked to find out that the qualifying student needs one student per, um, every, well, what is it? Under one, you had to have thirty-five students per square mile to get to one level, then twenty-one per square mile for another level, and then eleven per square mile for another level. Franklin County Tech averages zero point six students per square mile. Not only do we qualify, we kill it, right? Then it has the poverty rate. We're half of what's even required. So, all indicators, we would qualify. So, a brother going to Pioneer, they get rural aid. Their sister going to Franklin County Tech does not, just for the school they choose. So, the rural aid is a battle that I've been on, and, um, hopefully, that gets improved over time. That's another one that will take some time, but, um, we don't get a penny.
So, if citizens wanted to advocate for some more rational guidelines for selection, talk me through what you think those would be.
So, there's a process, obviously. Um, there's one criteria I would, I would pause on, and that is, we're starting to flatten our enrollment out, which is an indicator. So, they figured all VOTech schools' enrollments are going up, so they automatically, regardless of your status, will be disqualified from receiving rural aid.
Say it again, you automatically what?
We would automatically get disqualified from receiving rural aid, because our enrollment has gone up, right? That's gonna be no longer the case in the next several years. So, that, once that comes off, then we might be one of the only VOTech schools that would now have all that extra qualifications. Even though that qualification of increased enrollment isn't written into law, it's something they use as a benchmark. So, that would have to, and, and then once we establish that that would be the case, then the advocacy with our local representatives and that kinda stuff would have an impact.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the lottery, about the selection for the kids. What is, what, so, you didn't like the weighted, you didn't think the weighted one made sense the way it was applied?
Right.
What's the choice? What would your suggestion be, in, in the magical world where you got to fit?
I'm worried about safety first, safety second, and safety third.
Okay.
And in order to accomplish that, there would have to be a screening of school discipline. With a caveat to have kids improve. You start that in the seventh grade, so, once you see that improvement, it doesn't have to be perfect. You're gonna have kids fooling around, they're, they're impulsive, that, those things are gonna happen. But the ability to significantly screen out kids who have a historical record of that, that have either had significant interventions and what have you, they come through thirty-seven, eight filing. If a kid who had, brought something to a school in a middle school, applied to Franklin County Tech, they, and their number got chosen, they're in. There's nothing we can do about it. We wanna exclude the, the kids that make the other kids unsafe, right? So, school discipline and safety would be our number-one priority, so that would be something I would like to go back in. And I wanna make sure that we have the ability to look at school discipline, have the conversation with the student and the parent and the local school districts regarding their school discipline. And one of the other big indicators is attendance. When attendance is good, our follow-up research and studies have indicated students are successful in the world of work. When attendance is bad, they don't do well in the world of work. So, the attendance criteria would have won. You notice I didn't say grades, because kids learn differently? Right? I'm not as stuck on whether a kid has an A in English, an A or a D, that doesn't make the kid who got the A smarter. They may be better academically, but they can't change a pipe in a bathroom like the kid who got the D.
Well, what about skills and family background and stuff like that? I mean, if kids have been doing stuff with their dad the whole time, who's a plumber, you know, I mean, is there any, you don't wanna make it unfair.
Insightful question, because they got rid of the interview process. That's what we had as well.
Yeah, I remember that.
We had an interview process, which all that information would be a part of the profile, and you could score a certain amount of points. There was nothing wrong with what we were doing prior. So, if I was gonna advocate for something, go back to what we just did.
Okay.
Because it, it worked for fifty years.
Why don't, why don't we do this, um, it would be helpful if you let us know, because both funding and admissions-wise, if you're advocating for something with Rep. Lay and Senator Commerford. And I know that we speak, we just had Senator Commerford in here a few weeks ago, we're always talking about something.
Yeah, she's tremendous.
She is, so.
She is great.
And I know that oftentimes, they need us to, like, write a letter, do a hearing, or something like that. So, if there's something coming up that you're working on with Rep. Lay and Senator Commerford that you would like all the member towns to be aware of and weigh in on, we'd be more than happy to do that.
So, as an organization, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, we're kinda wait and see how all this goes.
Gotcha, okay. So, you'll let us know then?
So, it'll probably be a year down the road.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right.
I just wanna make sure, are there any other questions?
No, I got two questions, actually. Uh, I see you're, you're looking for a district-wide vote October twenty twenty-six. Have you given any thought to try to put that on with the midterm?
Yeah, we did, and it's, we're not, we're kinda guided by when the schematic design's done. This is coming from the OPMs and the architects of when that timeframe would be. So, we're just trying to go as close to that timeframe as possible. So, this is just an estimate, it could end up being that. But if we did it outside of that team, that particular timeframe, our school pays for the whole thing. We pay for the town clerks, we pay for the elections, it doesn't come out of the town funding.
Yeah, I think you'd have more participation if you could try to get it to the November twenty twenty-six. Uh, the other, other thing, if it doesn't pass, what's your plan B?
Plan B is we'll have to do some of the stuff we talked about.
The first page, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and which for the taxpayers-
And that's one hundred percent by taxpayers, is that correct?
Yeah, and it would probably be a little more than what we're talking about per year.
Because it's only for fifteen years.
Interesting, okay.
Right, right.
Okay, um, Bernie, do you have questions?
No, I asked them already.
Okay, David?
I guess just one with your, um, you said the interest of the school is leveling off, so you're, you're, the head count is essentially leveling off, and you're predicting that over the ten-year-
Yeah.
-trend. So, is that six-hundred-ish number a sweet spot for educators?
I think that's a good spot for us, um, and I wouldn't say the interest is leveling off. The actual, what we go by is the student population is declining. So, as we only go through a certain percentage of that total catchment area. So, when the student, um, population declines, we're naturally gonna have less and less come to us, just by the same percentage.
Everybody's experiencing that.
Right, exactly. So, that's gonna happen.
And MSBA did a huge analysis on that, projections, and all the statisticians went through all the numbers. So, we had asked for a little bit more initially, but the figures just weren't there.
Right.
One of the advantages that you do have, you do have nineteen other towns that are contributing to this cause, as far as that. Whereas some of the smaller districts, which only have two or three towns, it makes it a lot more difficult with the population of, uh, students going down, and it's not gonna go up. We're, we're seeing that trend. People are getting married, uh, later, they're having fewer kids. Uh, so, I commend you on always coming with the trending, what's trending in, uh, the population of the schools. And I really appreciate that.
I do too, and especially from a dollar standpoint. I think you've given us a lot of data over the years in terms of both enrollment for the school, as well as for the region and the state, and, um, also on dollars. We've always had a heads-up on capital and when it's been coming. I think you're good at delivering bad messages. Like, you don't sugarcoat it, it's just like, okay, and you let us know like a few years in advance. So, we're not, we're sitting here, and we're like, okay, that's a big number, but we're not totally surprised. Um, question for you, do you remember what you spent during the feasibility period with MSBA?
One point nine million.
Okay.
And that money, um, we didn't go out to bond for, because we didn't wanna hit the towns twice.
Yeah.
So, we had this plan ten years ago, and that other district, or to which we evolved in money, that we have from those other students outside the district, we siphoned that money away, so that we could pay for the whole feasibility ourselves and not go out to the towns for a bond on that, and then another bond for the building. So, that's how we did that.
Okay. Um, any questions from the finance committee? You guys good? Okay.
Um, one last thing, uh, to, um, segue on your last remark regarding delivering the bad news. I deserve to get killed tomorrow morning, because I forgot the slides and the handouts that my administrative assistant put right on my desk, and I walked right out the door and didn't give him, so thank you for making those coffees last minute.
Well, believe it or not, cold weather.
Take out one page and recycle it.
I, I, I don't know if I have an afternoon coffee or something.
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming, thank you.
See you, see you soon. Yeah, we'll see you for the, uh, for the budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna close our meeting for FinCom.
Seven oh seven. So, you're, you're adjourning at seven oh seven?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Wow. Okay, I'm opening on the dollars. Okay, shall we move on to the warrants then?
Okay.
Okay, um- Okay, um.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the twelve ten twenty twenty five payroll warrant of one hundred eleven thousand dollars, two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
I motion that we approve the December tenth twenty twenty five vendor warrant of three hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we're just noticing uh that included the tech school assessment, right? Speaking of the tech school, okay, minutes, can I get a motion to approve the November tenth twenty twenty five executive session, minutes?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can I get a motion to approve the November nineteenth twenty twenty five, um minutes?
Second.
So moved.
Second.
That's okay. Anticipating, I like it.
It's that mustache getting in the way.
The no brainers I like.
Okay, all those in favor? And one abstention. Okay, and can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November eleventh, oh sorry, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five?
It's like the psychic.
That's almost quick, that was really quick.
All those in favor? One abstention, okay. All right, and onto business, we're going to um look, we're going to actually, I need a motion to sign the donation agreement for thirty-nine Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
All those, any discussion?
Just wanna let you know, we have, it was agreed by, with the lawyers, uh we're gonna wait to file this when we do forty-one.
File it with, 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 actually file it at the registry. Right, but we are going to sign tonight.
Correct, so that we can do those back to back.
Okay, what did, I don't understand what you mean though about waiting to file.
Well, we don't wanna have one donated if we don't close on the other.
Oh, you mean, I see. Yep, so we're waiting for closing.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, do some technical.
Both documents getting executed at the select board level.
Okay, so motion to uh approve signing the donation agreement for thirty-nine Main Street?
Second.
Did you get that, Sandra?
Well, I got it the first time.
Yeah, that was the second time. Yeah, I know, this is the second time, we've already done that, but we're just. We did it twice, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Doubly approved.
All right, doubly approved, all those in favor? Okay.
It's everybody, so.
All right, thirty-nine Main Street, all right.
Flip it right over on the back, it's the final page.
Okay, and while we're doing that, do you wanna talk about forty-one Main Street?
Um yes, uh this wasn't included in your packet because an hour and, about an hour and a half before the meeting, there was no real contention, but there was language changes between the lawyers, and then it went to Sandra, and they signed it. Again, um the closing is estimated, it is signed today, that closing will be estimated for about January twenty-third based on the dates in the agreement. And that should give us plenty of time, they're doing the title um right now, and that'll all happen before we close.
Okay, um one motion then for um signing the purchase and sale agreement for forty-one Main Street?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh boy, and now we're onto liquor license renewals. And Sandra, I just wanna confirm in terms of uh the liquor license renewals, I mean, these are relatively straightforward, but there's no complaints, no issues with paperwork or with neighbors or anything like that? Okay.
Can we do this as one lump sum, or do we wanna go through all of them?
Yes, we may, yes, we can, Dan, you wanna give it a shot? Or Bernie?
I'll do it, I'll do it, well, I'm gonna read each one, and then we'll vote on them all at once.
Yep. That sounds good.
That's fine, it works.
I motion that we approve liquor licenses for Paul Cameron, Cameron's Winery. One oh four six Millers Falls Road, annual farmer series pouring permit, wines only, expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six. Paul Cameron, The Backroom Brewery LLC, ten forty-six Millers Falls Road, annual farmer brewer, brewery pouring permit, malt expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six. Shelby Hasenbackett, Spastic, Northfield Golf Club Incorporated, thirty-one Holton Street, annual general on premises, all alcoholic beverages, expires December thirty-first twenty twenty-six. Dennis Brennan, Northfield VFW, Post nine eight seven four Incorporated, five forty-five Mount Herman Station Road, annual veterans club, all alcoholic beverages expires December thirty-first twenty twenty-six, he's also requesting to waive the fee. Condor eighty corp, Jody James, Northfield Food Mark, seventy-four Main Street, annual package store, all alcoholic beverages, expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six. Madrigal Incorporated, Jody James, Mim's Market, sixty Main Street, annual package store, wines and malts, expires twelve thirty-one thirty, twenty-six. Christopher Sellers, the brewery at Four Star Farm Incorporated, annual farmer series pouring permit, nineteen H, wines and malts, expires December thirty-first twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second. And we're noting that that includes the request to waive the fee for the VFW.
Correct.
Have any issue with that?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, so that's included in the motion. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh class two renewals, and again, no issue with class two or class three, I know we were talking about that.
Class two, right.
What are class two and class three licenses?
Sandra, class, class two is what?
Versus class three.
Oh, uh class two is used cars, you can sell class three junk.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, shall we just do class two by itself then, since that's different? Okay.
Motion that we approve class two renewal license for Clayton Browning DBA, doing business as Browning Automotive, twenty-two Upper Farms Road. Class two license expires January first twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and class three renewals, two of them, we'll do both of these together?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve class three license for Daniel H. Browning, DBA, Daniel H. Browning, eight forty-nine Millers Falls Road, class three license expires January first twenty twenty-seven. And a class three license for Jeffrey Metowski, DBA Boyd's Autobody, nine fifty-two Millers Falls Road, class three license expires January first twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, we're on to the select board fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget.
I did send one uh with your material, meeting materials, but actually, this is a version two, and the reason I had to do a version two is because I had to up the telephone.
So you updated the telephone?
Right, because it changed on the calendar year, so the pricing went up. We also um had added this year, for example, we have twenty-three phones that we pay for that are managed in the voiceover IP system, um which is over seven hundred dollars a month, but we added this year, uh for example, Highway Garage was an added line. They had individuals, so it is still cheaper to add them than it is to run individual phones in each of these locations. Um and so now that's gonna total a little over seven hundred dollars a month, so. Plus, plus it includes a little bit of, of any bills we have for long distance.
Okay, and everything in blue is totaling to the
To the one above it.
To the count line above it.
Right, just to give you a breakdown to some of them.
Yeah, so we have a sense of.
So that's why the telephone went up, and that's, that's why, this, that's the only thing changed from the version they sent you, everything else is the same.
Okay, I didn't notice significant changes, to be honest with you, I mean, I see the two point eight cola.
The biggest change is down under the computer, the network management fee. And that's, well, we continue to have requests from different committees and departments and
Is that all the email?
Email accounts.
Yeah.
And every time we add an email account, it's uh depending somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars a month. So it can be three to four hundred dollars a year for every email account that gets added.
When do we get our new webpage? I thought we had done.
We're right in the throes of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right now, we start.
But it does reflect the new fee.
That's the ten thousand up top, thirty plus. Yes, we are, we are, are training, what's the next one's next week, and then we have a whole bunch in January, and then we should have a prototype ready to go, we've been working on it, uh Sandra and I for, for months, and Stacy with the rep page. So it's coming.
Roll out in spring sometime.
It should be after January, I'm not sure, February.
Okay.
Yep, and we're gonna do an update on one of the agendas too. Um any questions about this? Do we need to, I'll ask a question, do we need to put some guidelines or guardrails in around um email address, cuz that also implies support.
Right, well, with the email address, right, that's, but I mean, we, the plan we've chosen allows for unlimited support, and we kinda have to do that because we have so many, I mean, I just got the list, I think we're at twenty seven, and that supports devices, we have tw- over twenty-three devices between computers and desktops and iPads, and then there's twenty-eight or so email accounts, and that's restricting to one per board.
Okay.
As opposed to allowing, I mean, we just couldn't afford it if we were doing one per committee member. But now, like for example, fire department doesn't have one yet, we've slowly rolled in the police, we've slowly rolled in EMS, now they pay some of their own stuff.
Yeah.
Um but we have to now eventually roll in fire, especially if they get a new building, they're gonna be a new computer user. It makes sense to put them under the same contract, if they do their whole, uh, new contract. They can pay their section, like EMS is gonna pay per month, but it was thousands a month cheaper than to have them set up a whole new account, put them under our account and break out the users.
Okay.
So that's why that bill continues to rise, but it's, it's inevitable, I mean, everything's done on the computer now, everything.
Well, I just wanna call it out because uh I think it's interesting, and six years ago, when you started, and when I was on the town governance study committee, one of the issues was that there wasn't any real control over email addresses and um tech support, so.
Yes, and we have, we really have to say we have very good tech support.
Yeah.
We can call them and put in a ticket and they get back to people.
What's Civic Plus?
That's our website.
Oh, that's the vendor for uh the website. Any other questions? Nope.
No.
Okay, so this is going to go into the mix for review with the finance committee, starting in January of next fifteen.
I believe so.
The budgets are technically due tomorrow, um there's usually a few I have to scrape up, but they'll get, they'll get pretty much a full first pass at the requests starting Monday. Once I have everybody, these go in, the next couple days, I'll spend entering them all into the master spreadsheet.
Motion to approve the select board budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven.
So moved, second.
Did you get that?
Yeah, that's right, that's what, that's what I heard.
It's, it's only right.
David's the second, yes, it's Dan who's like, he's just
I kept, I kept out of that one, that's all right.
Can't blame him, Matthew.
Okay, but we still do, okay, um all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, great, and position request change of step for our treasurer slash collector.
Right, this is the request to change of step, not the grade, just, just the step.
Change of step.
Got the form, um and all the attached documentation, uh Michelle was previously a certified tax collector, but in the last several years, and it takes about three years of school, plus then the test, she became um certified treasurer. So she did this in summer at her last treasurer's conference. And then she took full advantage of the inspector general's office one free Massachusetts certified public procurement officer per year um that they offer, which is three classes, each costing about seven hundred dollars each, so it's over two thousand dollars worth of classes. They're about twenty hours long, you have to take multiple assignments while in the classes, and then you take a very comprehensive test, I know cuz I've had to do it and redo it as a, to recertify, and you do it every three years to recertify, this is not a one and done. And you have to pass the tests, like you don't get it if you don't pass. So I included her certification as treasurer and her three uh over classes that she took, so she um is working with us right now, she's gonna work on some of the procurement that we have for the um EMS OPM, and she's also gonna work a little bit on the HVAC for the library, because she needs to put in a few hours in actual procurement work, and then she can apply for her certification to be NC PPO certified. And so, kind of like we do with all other departments, we do it with highway, if they get a hoisters or a CDL, um we like to reward them for their efforts, many, many hours of efforts and a lot of work to go from a s- a six to a seven, and there's money in this year's budget for her salary to cut.
So uh the five hundred dollar certification, what was that for that was passed at town meeting?
That's, that's for getting her, she, she only had it for tra- tax collecting.
I just wanna make sure, uh just wanna make sure she gets it, she's already, she's already gotten it, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the town clerk, that's um a bonus.
She hasn't been certified for that yet, the town clerk.
No, not yet, she's in her classes.
Yes.
She'll take her test and do that, so, no, I, 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 I really feel very strongly about this and getting um people to take their continuing education, I think for the first time this year, Erin wants to take our um our adminis- our assistant in that office to accountant school with her at UMass, so it'll just be the cost of because they'll go for the day, it'll just be the cost of tuition, and we see how well that worked out with Erin. So we're, I'm really, really always supportive of these continuing education, and I think that they just enhance the staff in the town and bring such a level of professionalism and knowledge. And it's great for me, cuz I can bounce off them, and they can bounce off each other. When I started with one person who can do payroll, we now have three, which is great, because that one person couldn't go on vacation every two weeks. So, but now we have three people backed up, because we continue to expand that pool, if someone leaves, if something happens, you know, so.
And who, and when they're taking new, new classes, whoever's just taking the classes has the most up-to-date information.
Correct, and they also meet other people, that widens their pool of resources. They can contact other people they've met or other groups and organizations that they've joined to say, hey, I have this question. So they're not trying to wing it or figure it out, they have a, a deeper pool of resources at their disposal, so. I'm really pleased that she jumped on that, and um hopefully next year, I'll get somebody else to jump on it, cuz we get the idea that instructor general's class offered one free a year, so for a small town, that's.
I don't think we mentioned either that Michelle uh met with the inspector general.
When he came to visit us.
And um somebody from his staff, and she gave a lot of feed, great feedback on Northfield and the training to the inspector general himself, so.
He's going to visit every time, and he hit Northfield, you were there a few weeks ago now, months ago, and Michelle participated in that.
It was like a late afternoon Friday thing, it was a weird, but.
So anyway, so I would like to reward her by doing one step up.
Any questions or comments? I just wanna compliment you on a deep financial bench at this point.
And it's the hardest thing, one of the hardest things to fill.
And to retain, so.
A lot of small communities are going with contractors, cuz they can't get a person in the house.
Yeah, I just saw a, a town lost their contract, is losing their contractor like in the next month or so, and it's like, okay, good luck.
Very scary stories.
Okay, uh motion to approve, we're moving from step what to what?
From steps, from grade nine, step six to grade nine, step seven.
Okay, motion to approve that step change for the treasurer slash collector? Second.
So moved?
I thought you just made a motion.
I'm entertaining a motion, so so moved, and you're the second?
I love it, wasn't me this time.
She said motion to do it, she didn't say entertaining a motion.
That's right.
In my defense.
That's true.
Yes.
We have to vote on it, though.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I forgot to discuss it.
Aye.
No discussion needed, I don't think.
Congratulations to our treasurer slash collector, we're very proud of her. And we're gonna have her in front of the select board at some point to talk about, we have some stuff on the agenda, so we're gonna use that opportunity to get her in front of the select board. Get a little bit more interchange and exchange with the select board, and so we can thank her ourselves in person. Okay, on to the sixth town regional planning board, there was an update letter in your packet.
I just received their brochure in the mail today.
I did too, looks like this. Came in, um, right in the mail today. Um, and that was part of their update, that they were sending out a brochure explaining where they were at with the sixth town and the fact that they would be coming back with more information sessions and a potential vote in the springtime. Any other questions or comments from the letter that you, people wanted to bring up?
No, thought it was spot on.
Dan?
Did you get any feedback from the finance committee on that?
On this?
No, 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 the letter, the letter you were gonna send, oh.
Different topic.
Oh, different topic.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, it's the other letter, the other letter.
Yeah, no, this one.
This is a letter from the sixth town.
This one went to the finance committee, just FYI.
Okay, the other letter, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, that's, a copy's going to them as well, as the other finance committees too. Okay, and there was some, I just wanna keep an eye on this five versus six town thing with Gorwick. I'm just pointing that out on here. And otherwise, I think it's all relatively straightforward, and for those who are voters, those at home, it's basically all spelled out in the brochure as to what their next steps are. Okay. On to time off requests, I have a time off request. Motion to, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the time off request.
So moved.
Let me see.
I didn't see it.
Yep. There you go.
Oh, this reminds me, are we having a meeting on the twenty-third?
That's on the schedule now.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, we have, it'll be.
Second motion.
Thank you, motion on the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we have a second, please?
I was. Clearly decided. Just find myself.
Okay, citizens' concerns, topics not read, only doing, oh, we still have to do, sorry, there's page two of the agenda.
Oh, there's a back? Oh, my God, no.
Okay, do we wanna do?
I move that we reappoint effective December thirty-one. Mariah Anthony, Ryan Betters, Sean Garland, Talia Hicks, Jeremy Klep.
Klepadlo.
Klepadlo, Matthew McCarthy, Emily Mills, Corey Sutton, Alicia Toya, Carolyn Warger.
Zernick.
Zernick, and Philip Wonka. Terms expire twelve thirty-one twenty-six, we're reappointing to the EMS.
Second.
Committee. To the police.
Are we doing this as a whole?
Do you wanna do it as a whole, like we did the other?
Yeah, let me just, police department, to the police department committee or board, oh, no, this is part-time officers.
Yeah, they're all departments.
Part-time officers, John Cowan and Ben Welcome, terms expire twelve thirty-one twenty-six. Larry Hanson is the alternate on zoning board of appeals, term expire twelve thirty-one thirty. Joe Gravlin and Barbara Jacques, history commission, historical commission, term expire twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. James Venata, energy committee, term expire twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. E. Peter Veerling, council on aging, term expire twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. John McGowan and Tim Bowen, Shell Bridge Advisory Committee, term expires twelve thirty-one twenty-eight.
So moved.
That was you, I moved it, so that's a second.
Uh-oh, Dave got it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is our only entertainment for the evening.
All right.
Okay, announcements, there is a Fred Wells Will, speaking of alliteration, scholarship, and the applications for that are available at town hall in the main hallway, so I'm assuming that's down near the town clerk. And they are due by March twentieth twenty twenty-six.
It's a scholarship to what?
This is for high school students.
No, I don't think it's just high school, though.
Oh.
Is it just graduating? I think you can get it multiple years in college.
Yes, you can.
You can get it college, too.
Oh, nice, do they have to reapply each year?
They don't send it here, please read the instructions, it actually gets sent to the Fred Wells, you can pick it up here, but it gets sent to.
It's an academic monetary scholarship to college, post-high school and during college, that you can reapply for yearly.
Yes.
Correct.
And there is a website, so it's wellstrustscholarship.com, the Fred W. Wells Fund. Boy, his gift keeps on giving, this is like decades ago that.
Oh, and it's dozens of towns.
Yeah.
My kids all got them for four years.
Right, so not just Northfield, Ashfield, Berniston, Buckland, lots of different towns in Franklin County. I think they also support the Franklin County Fair, too, if I remember, the foundation does. Okay, that's that, any recognition for service, any shout-outs?
All those people who chose not to be reappointed to committees this year, we'll see, some of them, I think, at the annual town meeting, but a lot of, some of them are coming off at the end of December, so thank anyone of all for their time and service to, to the town. We'll have their lists, the list at.
Of the people who didn't re.
Didn't re.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
It was kinda like, no.
I may have some stragglers next meeting.
Okay, are you working, like, twisting their arm a little bit there, again, to make sure they're still on the committees?
Do you have something generally?
Yes.
The Northfield Food Pantry, obviously, the usage of that particular asset in town, and it's not just for Northfield. People utilizing this is on the rise specifically lately, regardless of the politics, a lot of people are experiencing food insecurities because of some of their benefits being withdrawn. And so, the pantry is accepting donations, they'll take non-perishable items, obviously, they will take cash donations, they'll take checks. Their operating hours are on the library's website, they have their own website as well.
And Facebook page, too.
And a Facebook page. But do not forget that they also collect bottles and cans, those nickels, dimes, and quarters add up significantly. So you can drop them off at the transfer station, as well as the new collection area at the Berniston Transfer Station is now open as well.
Yeah.
So they're able to siphon off some what normally would go into a giant hopper to be hauled away to recycle, those dollars stay in town, so, just as a reminder to people, so, there's a great big need for that.
Yeah.
And also, they, you can also drop off check or cash up in the library, they'll put it on the bulletin board and give them to them when they come in.
Good. Okay, great. Great, that went faster than I thought, in general, for the meeting, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do you wanna do it, Dan?
I'm not gonna say a word.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.